And did a good job with it and then I uh find and then I stepped in and kind of helped out. They're doing a great job, our adults that are up there, people know them, it's a friendly face when people come in, so that's all been been great. So, we keep adding uh adding some information, the one thing that um. Disappointed and I think I that I wish would've done a better job is information on the website, we are building that out and getting that there, but honestly, that is. That has been a little bit of work in progress and so that is Maddie is helping us and that information will get out. And hopefully, people will understand schedules and things like that as we go forward, um but um. Things are going well, any questions? Have particular interest in?
I just wanna commend Joel, um him and the staff, I think I had the record for check-ins.
You did.
Yesterday, I checked in with like last twenty-four hours five times. So, and most of them was actually there to hang out, but the staff has just been really wonderful and they don't, they don't know who I am. Which is kinda fun and so they just see some guy coming in and checking in and so I get to see their interactions with. Uh the customers and the citizens that are coming in and getting signed up and they're just incredibly patient. All of them are doing a really, really good job, so I commend Joel for getting his staff spun up so so quickly. Uh I was there shortly after Joel this morning at five and uh it's like a family affair up there for him and and his staff and. His wonderful wife's up there and it's like.
Yeah, she did some IT work for us last night.
She's getting all the TVs working, that was look pretty cool. But uh we had our department head meeting up there, Joel was uh very nice to host us on Monday, so we had our department head and then he took a tour. Maybe else that hadn't seen the building, cause believe it or not, there are people that still haven't even set foot in it ever, in any sort of construction or anything else and so. I think once you bring people into the facility and show them what we have, uh they're pretty odd. And then um and then they're they're really interested in it, so.
Reactions have been amazing to the pool. People absolutely love the pool, they just said, feels great, we have the right temperature, we have, you know, everything that's so.
That uh that current channel was packed almost, did I, just kids going each way, people walking against it and they were figuring it out, that's. That's the hard part, when you don't have all these rules and policies and procedures all just perfectly set. Um you kinda just let them go and see what they'll do in there and they kinda figure it out amongst themselves and so that was really neat to see. Uh but almost every basketball hoop was getting used of and we even have tons of basketball hoops in there, um.
There's pickleball groups starting about uh four thirty tonight, I took one of the courts and as we get more. Busy up there during scheduled, we will schedule certain times for that, but right now, there's enough space to let people do everything.
As Joel starts to expand now, I think it was very important for us to get to the point of where we are now with the building open. I think for the most part now Joel's uh presentations to you will probably cease. And we will add him just specifically to the administrators one, uh if there's continued things you wanna see specifically that Joel can provide. As part of his weekly report that comes to me that we can add to the admin report, let us know whether you wanna see some specific numbers. Put in there about where we are and signups, things like that, um but Joel's got a lot going on now is. Now is the full transition and focus up there and so. Where before it was really important to make sure we were keeping on track on construction, well, we've made it to that point, so I think. We're okay as obviously, we don't have every other department head here making presentations every single two weeks, I think it's. Joel's done an incredible job getting us to this point, um if you were able to hear the comments of Shane Bach, Senator Hughes. Um Mayor Eichmeyer, there's just a lot of people that were critically involved in getting that project to where it was and so I thank each and every one of them. And all the people they spoke about, um it was kind of a an amazing, I mean, we thought we had between five and seven hundred people come through that day. That's how many people were in the building, uh I was on my feet for four hours straight, just talking to people and giving tours and answering questions and. Uh it was really, really neat experience to be a part of, so. Um and one of the other ones, if you don't notice in there, in the in the donor wall, which is incredibly uh designed. Uh has different names for different levels of donation and stuff, but we obviously don't list those. But it lists things like the citizens of Seward.
That might be the biggest servo on.
Yep, and so, don't forget that it was also the actions of Mayor Eichmeyer and this body. To decide to even take this challenge on, almost five years ago, we started the project that ultimately ended up this project. Obviously, this thing's been going on for over a decade, but the iteration that became the ultimate Seward Wellness Center now. Started five years ago, I remember being in a hotel during covid uh on a Zoom chat with a bunch of citizens defining what the needs of the city were. And what they were specifically for the Wellness Center and that was five years ago. So to get to this point really comes down to a lot of efforts and those efforts include the efforts of this body, so please don't forget that. Uh that is really important, what we do here and you see the ultimate fruits of your labor, so. Joel, just working with you all this time and we'll continue to work in the future, but thank you so much for all your work on this.
Just like Dad, we've already been getting a lot of rental requests too, we got a bunch of birthday parties scheduled. Uh I get about one or two requests every day asking about it, we have different rooms. Today, I already booked a um a basketball, a varsity basketball team camp. That is gonna be used for officials for training, one of the officials contacted us and said, that's from here. Wants to do that and so we're gonna get a team camp coming in to use the gym and they're gonna use it for all their officials to train them. Recertify, use the classroom to watch video of that and then we are going to be able to. Uh receive all of the registration fees from the teams, so.
The volunteers yell at them if they thought that would be helpful.
So, those those things are already happening where we're getting where we're getting rental requests and things like that, so. I think more and more that's gonna have, we're a great space for it.
Thanks Joel, any other questions or comments for Joel? We do have under nine A a consideration of memorandum of understanding MOU with the. Seward County Chamber Development Partnership to create and sustain a substitute pool network of early child education providers. Do you wanna add that?
Joel, take care.
And I'll let Jonathan chime in as well on this, I'll just briefly explain, so he approached us. Uh couple of months ago about an opportunity to partner uh specifically with Samantha Patterson, our. Childcare Director of creating a subpool for uh child daycare providers. And basically work and build this up, but it'd be similar in the end to maybe a school has a sub list. For substitute teachers and and on-call and things like that, so they would know where to look for certain things. So the question was, would she be able to help start this? And so after discussion uh with her and in this time where she's not. Uh quite as busy until August when before and after school starts, her middle of the day is not as busy because she. Uh oversees a child watch beginning and end of the day, uh she felt that she did have enough time to put into this. And uh it's written to last longer, but the basic intent is the meat of. Of it of the work would be done from now over the summer and until the start of the school year. And so uh something that the idea is to start this here, it hasn't been done in Nebraska, correct? It's been done other places, they see the value of it, we would be the start of this for Nebraska. And then it, we'd started here, eventually branch out, where that goes, that's not necessarily ours to decide. But uh she feels that she's able to do this and give the time and so uh we have. The MOU and uh we think this would be a good thing going forward and this is a good use of her time. Uh during this time period and so, do you have anything else you wanna add?
Really, really funny, um just wanted to give a little context too, we appreciate the consideration for this partnership. Work with Sam in the in the past and her different roles, I think she's a perfect fit to help us get this off the ground. I wanted to share um just as we've been working on childcare within our chamber strategic plan, I wanted to give you some. Um quick documents on. As we've updated uh what's called our Communities for Kids partnership, so this is engaging all of our childcare service providers across the county. Um you can read that briefly, but specifically on the backside of that sheet, it talks about um this is directly requested from our licensed childcare. Uh service providers, they have asked for this subpool network. Because uh many of them don't have time off, when you think about a school system, they have a built-in um. Subnetwork as as Joel alluded to, we're trying to create this for them because we need childcare uh to have sustainability, we need to. Uh have it be seen as as a as a career path for people. Um and sustainability, so people can take a day off, take vacation, go to a doctor's appointment, they have to have a sub to do that, so they can. Uh continue to care for their their kiddos and families. This has never been done in the state of Nebraska, uh we're going to be first, um the reason we're able to pay for this. Uh we've built a relationship with a quite a large foundation and they have asked us to um help steward this over a three-year basis. Starting locally here in Seward, Seward County and then ultimately scaling it from there to the region and the state. Um they did ask specifically for a community partnership and they left that pretty broad, so my mind went to, well. We have a new childcare watch uh through the Wellness Center, um Sam is uh has is well-connected within our childcare. Uh service network and um we're hoping that this is mutually beneficial, obviously, it pays for some of her her time specifically. But she's building very similar relationships, um she's hiring part-time people that would care for kiddos. We're looking for those exact same type of people that would serve as potential subs um within the childcare service provider network. So we're hoping this is mutually beneficial, um it's short time for now, we're actually, we have a number of other partners that we're signing MOUs with. But really, the city of Seward would help us get this off the ground before we would scale it uh from there and so we appreciate your consideration for. Uh for partnership on this and happy to answer any other questions.
Thank you Jonathan, Joel, any questions or comments from the council on item nine A?
Do you need something?
So I mean, a motion to um approve the memorandum of understanding MOU.
I will make a memo first.
Yeah, motion in second, can't sleep on that rich. I'm as frustrated as you are, uh motion in the second, do register your votes, please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Cato Kayler, Colton McMillan, Milton Streis and Warren seventy-year-old.
Thank you, do you have anything else you wanna add Joel or Jonathan? You're good, the report, okay, thank you. Uh next we have item ten, update on proclaimed lizard disaster from three eighteen twenty-five.
Did you say lizard or?
Blizzard, there's a lizard in there, but.
Since last time I saw you, two weeks ago, we had a declared emergency in town, which we've only done three times ever. And so I think I gave a few updates, I can answer questions you have. Generally, just the gist of what happened was on that Wednesday, we had a blizzard warning. As you're well aware, the counties of Seward and York County essentially was the epicenter for that blizzard, snow event. And specifically wind attached with the freezing snow, we'll call it. Uh that ultimately ended up uh taking out most of the power within the two county area. Um and so throughout the day, uh just making contacts with our partners, uh I can't speak highly enough. Of the work that was done by Jared Hockstein and the electric department. Uh he was down, a crew member who was out of town at a at a um funeral, who couldn't make it back. For a few days due to the weather, um and then obviously, we're waiting to fill Larry's position and fill down in some of those things and so. There's also another one that we're technically empty as well, so he was technically down two. Uh they did an incredible job, they were out in the middle of the storm, like at its peak. Switching and getting things ready to continue to provide power within the city of Seward, which they did an excellent job of. But obviously, they were also going around identifying severe damage that was taking place within our system. Uh that would need extensive repairs, um and so by making those identifications. Um Jared let me know that he was pretty sure we were gonna need mutual aid and so I immediately contacted Beatrice. Uh because I, really what I did is I looked down for communities we had a connection with that we thought were getting hit very hard. And so I made the connection down to Beatrice, cause I might know some people there and uh they agreed to send us mutual aid and so they sent us. Three vehicles and three crew members that stayed with us for a forty-eight hour period, uh we kept them here that night in the cobblestone. Uh and uh had them out all hours of the night and the day until we felt comfortable and I believe. Approximately by Friday evening, for the most part, we had turned everybody on, every single meter. Not just every residential person, it was every meter, cause we were going through figuring out things like meters that were going to. Uh train crossings out by the uh water plant, things like that that were out, that we had to figure out. What are the implications of that, what's going on with that, so just a lot of weird questions. Uh on Wednesday, we did work through our emergency manager, uh and we did did declare an emergency. So that is a document that's signed by the mayor, so I cruised over in the middle of the blizzard over the mayor's house, banged on his door, I was like, hey, you gotta sign this. Cause I gotta send this back to the state immediately, um the reason that we did that for sure, obviously, we were seeing excessive damages and regional damages. Which will lead to potential reimbursements through the FEMA process, we'll know more of that later, um but. In addition to that, we had identified and and uh Water Waste Water Director Brad Coles here. Um I was in communication with Brandon, cause they let us know that the water treatment plant, the RO plant was offline. Uh from electricity, the backup generators were running and Brandon was doing the crazy math. To do the calculations of how many hours he had left since that had kicked off and the generator kicked on. To try and quantify, cause I told him, there is the mass potential that we will be out for days on end, what is our plan? At the same time, we were trying to line up diesel fuel to refuel that generator, that is hauled out of Milford through the co-op. Not locally here, their trucks are down in Milford where they fill up and Brandon contacted them finally when we could actually get ahold of somebody. And they were like, uh we have no trucks that can get to you and we have no electricity down here to run the pumps anyways. So you're gonna figure out something else out, so through that emergency declaration, we were able to make that declaration and then I was working actually with NEMA. To get assistance through the Department of Energy and potentially the National Guard to bring uh diesel fuel out if we got to that point. Because we're right in the middle of it, so just backup planning. Uh ultimately, we worked our way through it, um I will note, no emergency operations center was ever activated, um and so. Some communications that were happening, I feel like we did a good job at the city and working together, uh Bob Myers in the street department. And his crew, they were out all day, uh Jared did a great job communicating, Brandon, um and then uh. And Bob Cor also, especially if you have Bob Cor's member, they got stuck here, they couldn't go home. And so instead of just sitting on their hands, cause the city was closed, they just said, hey, what do you guys need? And we said, we need somebody to go out in the intersections and start shoving snow from all the equipment that's pushing around because. We were starting to already see those big icy boulders forming, we said, well, you gotta get that stuff out of the road and so they just took trucks out by themselves. And just started going behind Bob's crew and just clearing intersections out, um everybody just did an incredible job. Uh I wanna thank uh Paul Mueller down at Pack and Save, I called Jared late at night. I knew they're getting hungry, they're getting late, I said, Jared, what do you need, what does your crew need, what can I help you with and he said. If you could just give me some pizzas or something, so we could come stop in at six before we roll out for the night and keep going. Um everything was closed, I walked all of downtown, every shop was closed, every restaurant was closed. I was like, well, Valentino's is right next to their shop, I'll go out and check there, cause they're not answering the phone, they were closed. And luckily enough, we had just got Pack and Save back online and Paul was out pushing snow in the um. Out in the uh parking lot and so I just ran up to Paul, I was like, hey, do you know anybody that's got food right now? Uh that's making it or and Paul media was like, what do you guys want? I will open the deli, the deli was completely closed, I didn't think they had opened it all that day, he opened it back up, he gave us plenty of options and. We selected the food that the guys wanted, we brought in the street crew, the electric crew, uh Sergeant Frazee joined us with the PD that night. Uh and just kinda warmed up and just kinda settled in for a little bit to to share and commune in a meal. Uh and then um and Paul, I mean, literally Paul's grabbing tomatoes and heads of lettuce right out of the. Things and cooking it himself until he got a crew member that came in and helped him out and so I can't say enough about. Paul just rising up to to help us out and just kinda take care of our crews uh real quick and so that was a really nice story that came of that. And then literally while we're sitting there, we're having massive like traffic jams and stuff right outside the window. Uh it was getting pretty wildly, cause if you could see off to the west, it looked like a eighteen-wheeler graveyard. Cause stuff was just commingled all over the place out on thirty-four to the west, so. Then crews just get back in with Beatrice and we were off and running on electricity, started picking up debris, uh obviously. We're, you can still see, there's still debris out there over a week later, um and we are out. Still picking up at the cemeteries and things like that and so. Uh we've tried to do our best, Maddie's done an incredible job on social media, tried to do our best to communicate. We finally had to close down because of the size of the burn pile, we closed down the burn pile and we did start that yesterday. It's a little smoky windy today, cause that thing's gonna take a while, uh but we will reopen to the public on our normal Saturdays from now on anyway. But we just wanted, because of the size it was getting to, we're just gonna close it down this week, we still have tons of people bringing stuff in with their keys. Um and so we think that will be managed versus getting out of control down there as we continue to burn that. Uh and kinda take care of that debris, but if people need to come in, we'll be available on Saturday as normal, so they can just kinda gather their stuff up and then bring it down to us on Saturday morning. Um we're not picking anything else up on curbsides, the the crews went out and got all the big stuff, the stuff we felt like was from. City trees and things like that, but if you got sticks and twigs and little branches, even if they fell off a street tree, you need to gather it up and. Get it taken care of, so we do not have the time or the facilities right now to drive around and do that. Basically, we've converted a lot of our stuff over to the public properties crews, so we can get into the parks now, I mean, we're just getting to the cemeteries. We have trees that we're gonna need to take down still, uh ones that probably aren't a danger, but they're gonna die, so we need to get rid of them, so.
Do we replant trees that come down in like the cemeteries and such?
Uh I don't know what the the cemetery board will probably have to have a planting plan, cause I don't know that they wanna have. They probably want a whole area where they're gonna make decisions about putting trees back in, so there can't be grows at the same time. Um obviously, we're putting stuff out in the newer sections as we continue to move out to the east, at least in uh. The north cemetery, Greenwood, I think the canopy for the most part in Greenwood's holding pretty well, north cemetery, especially close to the highway. Is taking a beating, there's some big trees going down, so we'll continue to monitor that, but I don't. I don't know how onesies and twosies they are, they're probably gonna wanna have a whole section and then go put in three or four, five, six, seven trees. Get them to grow together to get a full canopy going again, um but we do have the relief program, always remind people of that. Uh we're trying to be very uh diligent with getting that out in front of people, so if they do have damaged trees, let us know, we got money to to give you. To put trees out, uh and we try to utilize that that's not utilized in each budget year.
And we want these trees in their property, we're trying to not utilize the parkway as much. Between the sidewalk and the street, just cause we have a lot of utilities now and there and it's just, it's it's just not ideal.
If there's trees that are under power lines?
The electric crew, uh if they're in immediate danger, will take care of them, otherwise we contract specifically with a crew out of. Lincoln that does electrical work and they just come through and go block to block to block throughout the year, so you'll kinda always see them around. Uh they can call us, they're concerned about it, some of them we may still may not have got to, I mean, we're still repairing our system. Those massive transmission lines that were out by Augusta, we haven't even gotten close to, we're getting estimates and trying to figure out what to do with those, so. Our guy's a little busy, but if there's stuff close to power lines or something they're concerned about, so they can come out at least and look at it, the other one is, half the people can't tell what a power line is. Most, most of that stuff is probably on telephone lines, cable lines and fiber lines.
We bury a lot of, I mean, the newer stuff we would bury and 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 you might see some proposals in the future of. Burying, maybe burying some of the lines that are still up, like in the older parts of town. Um and some of the main ones like on Hillcrest by Concordia, they should express some interest in the past and maybe have some of those lines buried. Um it's expensive and you have to have, that's why you have those grids, the green boxes, sometimes you see them along the 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 parkway area, that's. That's the, that's what you get instead of a transformer on a pole and so um in some of the places like in downtown. You could you run into some real estate issues of where do you put that kinda stuff if you wanted to bury that, but. Um but we, that's one of the reasons why if you notice, the poles that we had that sheared off are typically on the edge of town where they're more. One, there's poles and two, they're more exposed to the elements, um and that's why the county and Norris Public Power got hit so hard. Because there's just no protection for those poles that are out there, they get wet, they get heavy and they top heavy and then they can get uh sheared off like that.
Um a few other items on that, uh I wanna give a kudos to Greg Radkey, uh one of our newer street crew members. Uh we had to kinda do a little bit of a rescue for somebody out in the county, they were on our utility, but they're out in the county. And they called in and noted that they were running out of oxygen, uh and we actually had some other medical issues that. Were out in the county that I've perfectly heard of, that had nothing to do with us, but this is one of the things we'll talk about as kind of a. Postmortem on this is in the future on blizzards, what activation plans can we do, coordination can we do? Um I did have a conversation on Wednesday about mutual aid with Bruce Vidash, which is the president or executive director of. Norris Public Power, their house down in Beatrice, so I was in communication with him, um they were already activating their mutual aid. We did do a bit of repair work to help assist them, we also have some series where like, it's a Norris pole, but it's our line or it's our pole, but their line and. So we did some coordination to help them out and keep things moving, uh but Jared and his crew are still working through it, um but going back to Greg Radkey. Uh Greg was the one that drove a motor grader out to that resident and took it all the way into their driveway along with a family member to get that person out of their house. Cause they could not leave and they didn't have any power and they were running out of oxygen, so we were just like, we got it, we'll just take care of it, so. We did that, um and then Greg, the same day, uh if you noticed, um. There's issue in Lincoln with the snow on all the north-facing traffic lights, uh they were completely packed in, you couldn't see the color on or anything on them. And people aren't smart enough to look at the side lights before that situation, so. Highway fifteen and thirty-four was getting to be a free-for-all, so were the other intersections and so uh Greg quickly jumped in and lifted truck with some crew members. He got up there and he was just chiseling all the snow and frozen ice out of all of those in town and got that done on the same day, so I was like. You're kinda my random guy for all kinds of weird stuff today, but.
And he's new?
New, new to us, he came from the county, had numerous years of experience working in the county uh highway and roads department and so. Uh but kinda just uh uh kudos, I just wanted to note that those kind of two interesting things that happened and they both involved Greg, but he got them done. Like that, so I appreciated that and I let him know, the last one is, is all the crews now are still tracking all of their hours, their equipment hours. Vehicle hours and what they're doing, especially debris removal and the repairs of the electric system. And then that is all being accounted for uh for NEMA and FEMA purposes. NEMA and FEMA will probably, I think we're gonna do a virtual meeting with them shortly to kinda prep this. I believe likely they're preparing because there's gonna be a federal de- declaration of a disaster here and that will then. Entune us to uh potentially have some reimbursements, but since we just got done getting audited on the nineteen flood sort of. Uh we're kind of up to date on what our policies and procedures are, so Derek's been leading the charge, making sure all the forms are in front of those department heads. And they're filling that in on the regular, so we have all the documentation ready, when they show up, we say, here's all our stuff.
Um did you have any communication from the state about this being a five-hundred-year event?
Uh I don't know about the specific level of the event, so.
We, we did in Fremont, that with our stuff, so that's why I was curious, I assume it was just as bad here.
Yeah, I think from the snow side of it, again, it all melted very, very quickly, but I think the epicenter of the snowfall was between. I think it was Waco, had the highest snowfall in the state, uh and York had just the same, like if you go down thirty-four towards York. You just see all new poles.
And I guess, I guess how they track it is the thickness of the ice on the wire.
So, uh kudos to you, I think the county especially is pushing, like I said, a postmortem. So we'll get together with the emergency manager and have a kind of a follow-up discussion on this about what we need to change, what policies and. Leops need to be activated and and utilized, um sheltering, all kinds of different things, cause yes. I think I texted on Thursday morning to a county commissioner that we had four thousand six hundred and fifty-two customers, rural customers. With no power on Thursday morning. with no power on Thursday morning. And I estimated on Wednesday, and I was talking to Dr. Fields, it'd be between five and seven days for most of those people. And that ended up being right. And so that's something where if, I think if you described the situation we ended up ourselves in ahead of time, everybody would say, yeah, that sounds like an emergency and a disaster we need to coordinate. And just unfortunately, I think Norris went into not panic mode, but they're just like, because it's huge for them, it's regional versus our little town, that they just kind of like, were like, just stop hemorrhaging everywhere. But we can do better as Seward County in coordinating our efforts, I believe. And so we'll do a postmortem and follow up on that, make some changes and adjustments and be prepared to do better next time. So, but I, I think from the city of Seward side, we did an incredible job. I don't know that there's much more in the circumstances that we could have done, but we got ourselves in order pretty fast. We can be of use because we were the only ones with power at one point. We can be utilized as an asset, whether that's sheltering or emergency assistance. You know, if they're going out clearing roads, we can go out and hit the emergency ones when we need to get an ambulance, you know, out somewhere. And we've got a motor grader that's got most of the work done in the city already. Well, we'll just have that one on standby and we'll wait until the call comes and that one's going, stuff like that. And still be busy, but just, just that coordination effort. So we'll follow up on it. Any questions?
No, just thanks to the city team for everything we did.
I think there'll be more opportunities, especially for the linemen. I think there is a VFW dinner, pasta dinner in recognition of them on Friday night at the local VFW. So check Facebook on that. And I think there's gonna be some more appreciation opportunities in the weeks to follow for them. Incredibly long night, especially those poor Norris guys. But Southern Public Power, LES was out here. Our guys were helping Norris, all the Norris guys. I mean, you just look at those trucks. The biggest one was just the conditions. I think we pulled our truck out like five times, just ourselves. And they were getting stuck everywhere, trying to get in these ditches to repair these poles as fast as they could. Really, really bad conditions. We're usually in your summer storms. It's so hot and humid out. You give it a day, it's all dried up. Well, these ditches stayed wet muddy and mucky and filled with snow for at least a few days, right when you want to get in there and do it. So not the best conditions to be working in.
Thanks, Greg. Any other questions for Greg? With that, we just move right into the city administrative reports.
I can answer your questions you have. We're through the evaluation period. And so that took up a big portion of my time, kind of finishing a few of those up now. But when you have fourteen direct reports, it takes up a lot of time along with the declared disaster, a wellness center opening up. We were working through an LB eight forty application that Connor and myself and the LB eight forty committee had worked extensively on that, as you may well know, kind of took an unfortunate turn with the loss of Chelsea Kosmiki. And so trying to figure out what to do on the four of the Sixth Street Cafe. So that was a real unfortunate circumstance. This is, we got a heck of a two weeks. Like this just kind of was not fun. And a lot of stuff happened. But then Derek tried to leave me for a week in the middle of all that.
You folks, you said, yeah, that's where I was at. So funny.
So, but the staff did a great job. Like I said, I, there's so many little stories about that disaster one. We closed at nine AM. I think every city hall staff member was in city hall till one o'clock, taking phone calls so that we could keep the amount of phone calls going to dispatch to a minimum. So we were taking all the utility and electric phone calls we could as long as they could stay there. And then, and I said they could go at any time, but they were, they were, they were troopers to help out with that and keep communicating on social media and stuff. Matty's work. So, but I'll be honest, the last two weeks is just like a blur. So I can answer any questions you have.
Two weeks and three days, that's what it felt like.
Any other questions or comments for Greg? Or would you get a motion to accept the report?
Moved to accept the report.
Motion in a second. Do register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Cow, Kayla Colton, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, seven zero.
Any future requests for council items or membership action? Seeing none. Jonathan, what's going on in Seward?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, I'm headed from here to Ball Rocket. We have our mentor night tonight for the Concordia Gattis Competition. And then they have semifinals on the fifteenth and finals on the twenty-ninth. We encourage you to support our student entrepreneurs. This Friday, the fourth, ten AM, Town Hall.
Wait a minute. If you could also go down to Jarvis Hall.
Yes.
For the sunraser or the.
Yes, Songs for Shade.
Thinking.
Yes.
Thirty minutes, so very, very quick.
I was gonna say, yes, there's a lot tonight. Let's see, this Friday, the fourth, ten AM, Town Hall event with Senator Janet Hughes at the library. We encourage and welcome you to join us there. Appreciate her investment of time to update us on activities at the legislature. Saturday, April twelfth, coming up is our annual cleanup day. Again, appreciate you. Thank you. It's on my notes. We appreciate the partnership with the city of Seward, obviously, on this annual event. We're doing hazardous waste. We do have the flyer out. And so please pass that out far and wide to your constituents so people know what they can bring this year. And then I was gonna say thank you to Councilmember Singleton and others in support from the Celine Seward Waste Management Organization for a grant for the event. We've never had that before. So we're really grateful for that support. Wednesday, April sixteenth, we have four ribbon cuttings. We're celebrating the new Pasta Barn being opened, restaurant here in town. I'm celebrating with our friends in Milford with their Timber Creek subdivision, phases two and three. We're opening up our Seward County Digital Empowerment Center here at the NextLink building. And also a ribbon cutting with Valhans, a Realtor here in town. Thursday, April twenty-fourth, we have our annual business anniversaries luncheon, celebrate businesses, organizations in Seward County, five-year increments, five to a hundred and fifty years and everything in between. And we would welcome you to join us. And lastly, Seward County Gives Week, April twenty-sixth through the first. Lots of worthy charitable causes as a part of that event. And so we welcome you to help support that. With that, that's all. Thanks, Mayor.
You might want to keep an eye out too because we also gave a fifteen thousand dollar match for the county for another tire day.
Oh, great.
So it'll be coming.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, is there any motion to adjourn?
Second.
Motion in a second. Do register your votes. Please display the votes.
Voting in favor of Francis Cow, Kayla Colton, Miller, Singleton, Streisand, Worgen, seven zero.
Glad to hear you just riffed on getting on that.